Good morning, everyone. Today's Monday, April 5th, 2021. The time is 11:04 a.m. This is our weekly Commissioner's Status Update. Attending Commissioners Duncan Brooks and Filios. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Let's get through these. First item, Marine and Detective Building Project update. Leslie?
Yeah, so Corey's here to give us an update, and I'll let him.
Morning Commissioners. Ray Trapp, Longwall Trapp Architects.
Yeah.
The Marine and Detective Building Projects, I just want to give you an update on where we're at with those. We're about ready to go out for bid. We're going to bid both projects together. They have separate funding sources, as far as I understand. So we're going to get separate numbers for each of them so that we can track them individually on the costs, so where the money comes from. I do need to probably run it through legal. And I need to know who I need to run it through at legal. Someone could help me with that.
Yeah, if you give it to me, I'll forward it.
Okay.
So, yep.
Okay.
It'd be the frontal documents on that. One of the things, too, I want to tell you is that with the way costs have been going, we estimated both these projects over a year ago, and costs have escalated a lot in the last six months. Originally, the Detective Building was around $100,000 total project. We think that's going to be maybe closer to 150. The Marine Storage Building was, a year ago, was around 100,000. We think that's going to be closer to 125 on the cost. Talking to Ryan Higgins, the Marine, he has money in his budget enough to cover that.
Lieutenant Higgins, yeah.
Yeah, right, so.
So that's where we're at.
But what about the Detective one? Did they say that? Did they indicate?
I don't know. That's a separate. I don't know where that budget money is coming from. That one's more under your control, from my understanding. So I don't know what's been set aside for that. Other than I know a year ago, we estimated total project cost was around 100,000.
Okay, so when do you expect responses to the RFQs?
We'll probably send it out in a couple of weeks once I hear back from legal. And then we'll probably get responses back middle of next month on the bids.
Okay.
And then if they do turn out to come out, too, we've already had one department come to us and put their building on the back burner. If we do, if it does come back outrageous, I mean, is that an option?
Always an option.
Always an option, yeah.
Okay.
Question is, is there a price, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll end up discussion more down the road.
Fair enough. Any other questions for Corey?
I don't think so. I'll just wait for your documents and move from there.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the pending item status review. Okay, so, excuse me. The first item is the County Forum of Government Study Commission. That's on the agenda as a separate item, so we'll just, we'll get to that. I think it's next. Facilities expansion. Leslie?
Yeah, so on April 13th, right, all the stakeholders will be involved again to the latest iterations of what their space will look like in the new building. So Corey, did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, we're just going to, we'll get plans ahead of time, and we'll send them out to everybody so they have a chance to look at them. As, I guess, a little additional information, I did tour on the master planning side of things. I did tour a lot of the facilities last week. I'm going to put together some notes. I'd probably want to go out and maybe tour a couple more facilities. One of the things I did want to do was go out and tour Kootenay Electric, maybe with some people from the Sheriff's Office to get some input from them. I was going to invite some of you if you wanted to come, if I set that up.
Sure.
And one of the things I was surprised, looking at the clerks for the court, they, we really need to do something for them if we can. They are packed in there like sardines in their facility. And I think in the new building that we have planned, we have unfinished space that we might be able to accommodate them, to spread them out.
Well, let me ask you this. With regard to the, forget the KEC for the moment. With regard to the new building, seriously, are we building it too small?
If you're going to try and put everything in it today, you have enough room to accommodate everybody today if you add another floor for either the prosecutor or the public defender. They have space to add. In all their spaces, they have room to add maybe four or five people to their spaces. So they have a little bit of growth, but that growth is probably only a couple of years, maybe five years at the most.
But by the time the doors open?
They would probably be close to being full when they open, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Are you going to be sticking around for the rest of the meeting? Can I speak with you later?
I can stick around if you want me to, yeah.
Yeah, if you don't mind? Okay, would appreciate it. Okay, then, anything else?
Not on that.
Okay, pack airport lease? Still waiting on Wally?
Actually, no, no, no. Stephen has been reviewing it, and Stephen's reaching back out to Wally to let him know the changes. Or they're in negotiations, I suppose.
Okay. Thank you. 1A, 1B upgrade? It's in engineering. Tentative start date? Okay. So is it about a one-week install? Depending, okay. Okay. Financial snapshot. Deana?
It's that time. So in front of you, you have the newest financial snapshot. I took these numbers as of the 2nd of this month. So mixed it up a little bit here. Some of the same things you'll recognize. We are currently underspent pretty much in every area. Sheriff's tiny bit over, but not materially. We've collected now 54% of our revenue for the year, so we're right around where we should be. Our current spending's at 48%, so under. Our health insurance spending is about 45% right now, about $5 million we've spent so far in medical claims, dental, that sort of thing. We've used $28,500 in contingency so far. So still quite a bit of contingency funding remaining.
How much is in there, roughly?
There's 301 and 250 in the other, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So, looking good there. As you know, we moved our fund balance around, so you have assigned fund balance going into the budget, about $11.8 million. And our cushion, $20.4 million of unassigned. So most of our out-of-budget additional fund balance use, we haven't really used much since the last update. What I would want to draw your attention to are some things that have to do with payroll and personnel here. So right now, we have a lot, a record number of open positions. Because of that, and because it's really hard to back into the numbers manually of what's been spent mid-year and changes, what I did instead was took a look at the dollar value of those open positions. So unloaded right now, our current open positions on an annual basis are worth about $2.7 million, which means that if you look at our annual payroll right now, as of last payroll, that $63 million is missing that $2.7 million if we were fully staffed. If you look at the salary savings surplus from those positions being open, I calculated how many days they've been open. And unloaded, that's 552, 587 is the salary savings that's being generated from those open positions since those open dates. Now, I know you've had requests come through where some of that has been utilized. But it just kind of gives you the magnitude of how understaffed we are and the pressure it puts on current employees, and it drives our overtime. So those are, you know, just some factors to consider as we go into the budget. And then down at the bottom, also as part of this whole mid-year payroll changes, I wanted to give you an idea of the volume. I know you've limited the amount of asks to 10 per meeting, but I wanted to give you an idea of how many requests have been brought before you since the first of the fiscal year. So right now, I went through and I looked at all the calculations that I had done, all the projection documents that I've done since the beginning. We're at 78. I've done 78 projections. And then it gives you the breakdown by department.
By department.
So your biggest ones, you know, Sheriff, no surprise, they have the biggest budget. But Assessor has a lot. Community Development's pretty high. So that just gives you an idea of who's bringing you those needs and those repeated needs. So, any questions?
Thank you for this. Questions for Deana?
No.
If you think of any other statistical information or just stuff you think about or you wonder about, shoot me an email. I can include it in the next snapshot.
I do have a comment regards to the personnel requests. I think that there's some leeway where HR can actually make a decision and be able to handle some of the things. So I've talked to legal a little bit, and at our next HR meeting, I will bring that up. And then that way, we can kind of address that so we don't have these requests coming for us that aren't, don't have a budget impact. They don't, they're not material.
It takes a lot of your time, too, for all of these requests, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Deana. Okay, so that's the financial snapshot. Moving on, ballot, excuse me, ballot bond language?
Yeah, that's just on hold. I saw another bill that will get more information tonight or tomorrow. I can't remember when it, I think it's tonight.
You mean the legislative?
Yes, they've got another bill looking at reducing the funding options for counties or for all taxing agencies in the state.
So we'll know more this afternoon?
Yes.
With the conference call?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's the same thing with the building financing. They're kind of both, both tied together.
Okay. So both on hold then for now?
Yeah.
Okay. State of the county? Oh, that's the presentation. Okay, so Les, we're going to do, we're each going to do a PowerPoint. We know what Leslie's doing. We know what I'm doing. Bill?
I'm going to do a PowerPoint on the organizations and on the liaison for.
Okay. Fair enough. Anything else? Okay, that takes care of item number two. Item number three, optional forms of government ad hoc committee guidelines, potential action item. I'm indicated for that. Well, anyway, so what happened last week is we each forwarded a name. Leslie provided Mark Eberlein, Bill, Dan Gookin, and I, Nancy Pluff. And that's the group that will proceed to identify the nine individuals that once we agree, because ultimately, we have to make the appointment by code. So those nine individuals would constitute the study commission. So, questions, concerns?
So I wanted to put in just a couple guidelines for those three individuals to consider. And then we also have to amend the bylaws because in there, it states that the three people will select the nine. So it's just a wording change to make sure that it is not in violation of statute. So that's one. So I have a question, and then a couple different things that I would like to address. I just want to make sure the three members can appoint themselves as part of the nine?
Thoughts?
I think the three members can ask the other members to appoint them. Yes.
Okay, so then should all three members be eligible, then, to serve on the committee?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay.
I'm fine.
All right.
They may choose not to. That's up to them.
Sure, okay. It's just the section outlines that they have to have lived in the county for at least a year. And I know that one does not live in the county. And so that's just one of my concerns, is if you're allowing them to do that, and then one is not eligible.
No, I think she still lives in the county. How much longer will you be in the county? Let's see what happens, because that could be, that could be an issue unless you guys move quickly. I know that, I don't see why it would take longer than that, frankly, but it depends on the process. Let's put that aside for the time being. Go ahead.
So the other thing is, I would suggest that five recommendations be from the unincorporated county and not living in cities. I would also ask that three alternates be chosen as well because if for some reason, one of the nine cannot be, cannot fulfill the study, then I would ask that three alternates be done. Of course, they have to adhere to open meeting law. I think that was, that was it. And then the other thing I would say is anybody, any applicant running for a county office in the May of 2022 primary, that they would not be included in the recommendations.
Bill?
I don't know how you can tell that last one unless they've already announced their candidacy.
Well, I mean, this can be one of the questions that they ask or a question on the application. Are you planning on running for a county office?
Which is meaningless because to go say no and mean no, and then later decide yes. Not that a politician would do anything like that.
I actually have, I think, a simpler approach. I'd rather leave it up to the three people. Let them come up with whatever mechanism they choose because in the end, we have to make the appointment. So if we find there are nine people and we disagree with three, we can change that. I think, I don't really want to box them in. I think what they do is they get together, they elect a chairman, and they decide how they want to go about it. I think trying to box them in and create sideboards is really unnecessary at this point, simply because in the end, we have to make that appointment. Now hopefully, there'll be few, if any, changes at all, but I don't have, I would just rather leave it up to the three of them. Because if we're going to start creating sideboards, then why don't we just go back to the initial recommendation that Bill made, where each of us appoints three? So what we're trying to do, I think, from my perspective, is remove us temporarily from the process so that it's somewhat more objective.
I agree. That's what I'd like to see is get the discussion started and keep your hands off.
Okay, so Nancy, is there an application form that, because I know that the three of us have been contacted by many people wanting to apply?
If you use the regular advisory work application, you can create one or you can take us back to the board for this.
Okay.
There you go. And then you guys decide how to review them. I presume you're going to be voting on them, two out of three. And as Leslie pointed out, all the meetings are open. Open meeting law has to be paramount, and off we go. And then in the final analysis, we have to make the appointment, and that's per code.
And we did reach out to all three last week. We just wanted to have this meeting before setting up.
Okay. And we do have to make that change to the bylaws, right? All right, then. Are we all set? We ready to go forward? Okay. All right. Panhandle Board of Health, resume submission and discussion. Bill?
Well, I assume everybody's had time to go over the applicants, the people who are interested. I think they were 17 or 18. And I've narrowed mine down to five or six.
I think we said we would each submit six.
Yeah. I have six.
Leslie, you have six.
I have six.
So why don't we do this? And Leslie, we can start with you, one by one. And as you name them, if one of us has that individual as well, so that makes two, then that individual proceeds to an interview? Is that fair?
I'd rather go last, but yes, I think that's fair.
You want to go last?
Yep.
You want to go first?
Sure.
Okay, so as you name the individual, if there's a second, that individual proceeds to an interview. Go.
Jay Jamison.
Jay Jamison? Leslie?
No, not on my list.
Okay, on mine. Okay, but wait a minute. Who's keeping track?
I am.
Okay.
You are.
Fair enough. Okay, so go right ahead, second one.
Jay Hanson.
No from each of us. Go.
Underall.
Underall? Yes for me. Leslie?
Nope.
Go right ahead. Keep going.
Edwards.
Leslie?
Um, hang on here. Let me get my, oh, Edwards. Nope, not on my list.
Okay, yes for me. Go.
Gail.
Who?
Kay Gail.
Not me. Leslie?
Nope.
Keep going.
And Armire.
He's on my list.
Not on mine. Okay, put him on? Put her on? Sorry, I don't know if it's a male or female.
Male.
You want to go last? Okay, so I'll go next. Okay, so Edwards, we already got that one. Underdahl, we already got that one. I had, I also had Jamison. We already got that one. Dartis Kunz?
Nope.
No? Okay, X. Let me see. Baker?
No.
Nope.
X. Cork?
No.
Leslie?
Uh, hang on here. I did it by first name, so that's why I'm all, I'm all over the place. No.
No. I'm done.
Okay, so I have Dr. Johnson. And so.
Okay, no, go ahead.
So then I'm going to, you guys have three, and I literally have one. So I would ask that we either interview more than six people or that we change one. So I've got Burns, who is a VA nurse. And so I think with our population, you know, with the increasing number of veterans, I would like to see that person interviewed. Let's see.
Did you have Burns?
No, I didn't. But I could, I don't have a, she was close to one of the ones that I wanted, but.
Okay, so you're willing to interview Burns?
Okay. I would interview Grissom because that's an elected official who has applied.
I would have to nix that. Go ahead.
And, let's see.
So you're saying you want to interview six?
Well, I have six marked down, but.
Well, no, we each do. But I think we've only got agreement, two or more on, how many is it, Ronnie? Three?
Yes, you have, you two have agreement on three.
Okay, so you wanted to add, go ahead. Go right ahead.
Um, yeah, so I had, on mine, I have Johnson, Burns, Grissom, Meyer, and Turner and Hall.
Okay, so, all right. So if we agree with Johnson and Burns, to get to the six, you'd want to add one more. So among the three that you've got, who would you like to add for an interview? So we top out at six?
That is six.
We had three?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Burns, we've got Johnson, Jamison, Underdahl, Edwards, and Meyer.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay.
Did you want Meyer?
One, two, three, yes. Four.
She and Bill were in a.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. I missed that.
Yes, okay.
Okay, then?
Yep.
You want to give us the names one more time, please, Ronnie?
Do I have to press the button down?
No.
Okay, you're on. So the six that we have, I don't have first names for them. I only have last names. So we have Johnson.
Yep.
Burns, Jamison, Underdahl, Edwards, and Meyer.
Okay.
Yep.
So Nancy, you take over from here and get them set up for interviews? Okay?
Great.
We all set then? Okay. Moving on. Public defender, office space, discussion. Leslie?
Um, yeah, so we'll come back to the Board of Health executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. I almost skipped over that. Okay.
I'd probably rather get Ann out of here quicker.
Okay.
If that's all right, and our discussion will not take long.
Okay.
So.
Ann, you want to get close to the mic, please?
And unfortunately, we, actually, Dave, if I do not mention the location, can we talk about the lease? Because it's on the agenda for a 1C. But I think, I don't know.
We do it in open session if we don't identify the property?
I think if you're just going to talk generally about the needs of the public defender, I don't know exactly what you're going to talk about.
We're, actually, we're talking money.
If you're going to engage in
Financial.
Sort of a negotiation
Yes.
or that kind of discussion.
Yes.
Then I would recommend you do that in an executive session.
Okay.
If you're just going to talk generally about the needs of the public defender for a space or about the county paying for a space, then that should be done in an open session.
It's negotiation.
Okay, and that, I think that's appropriate for executive.
Okay.
All right, then. So, let's go.
All right. I move we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061C.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, going, entering into executive session with Deputy Civil Prosecuting Attorney Dave Ferguson.
I want Deana to stay. Deana, can you stay?
Deana, would you stay, please?
Dina, would you stay, please?
Okay, so the time is now 11:43. We're about to exit executive session. Motion?
I move we exit executive session with staff to proceed as discussed.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye, and the motion is carried. Okay then, moving on to item seven. Bill, your mics on. Okay, so this is a request for yet another executive session. Are we proceeding?
Yes, we need to. It's for Stephen, so...
Okay.
We want all chairs mic'd.
I know, sorry.
We'll get seat pads. How's that? Motion please.
I move we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061F.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye, entering into executive session with Deputy Civil Prosecuting Attorney Dave Ferguson.
12:09, we're about to exit executive session. Is there a motion?
I move we exit... I move we exit executive session with staff to proceed as discussed.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye, and the motion is carried. We can do this one of two ways, but I don't want to hold everybody else up while we break for another executive session. So why don't we open up for public comment?
Yep, and then I'm thinking I'll just put that on another meeting.
Exec?
Uh huh.
Want to do that?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll do that.
Okay, folks, if you wish to speak, come forward.
Do we need to... do we need a motion to remove that item from the agenda?
No.
So can you just solidify that you guys are removing that so I can have that on record, please?
Okay, so regarding item number five.
Yeah, we'll handle that in a different meeting.
Yeah, we're deferring the executive session to a yet-to-be-determined meeting date. Okay. Is there anyone we don't know? Is there anybody on? For public comment? No, no one? Okay.
Okay.
Once again, public comment. Yeah, William, please.
I'm Board of Commissioners, my name is William Lee, Quodle Lane. Mr. Bill Brooks, I know that you said that there are people that do support the alternative forms of government. I think you've said that a couple times. But it seems like for every meeting that we've had, you know, in last week's meeting with the County Republican Women's Federation, it doesn't seem like there's... I don't see any people that really support this idea. And so, as my question to you, and you don't have to answer me right here, but I'd be interested to get some emails that people have perhaps like reached out to you in support of the idea. Just so, I mean, I think it should be scrutinized. We should be scrutinizing both sides of the issue, right? I think it's... it always helps to think critically and analyze things, just to weigh things out. So I'd be interested in getting those emails of people that have, you know, contacted you in support of this. I think you have my email?
It's technically a public records request and...
Oh, okay. I should read it out.
And Nancy Jones handles those, and she is aware of your email requesting those.
So you emailed Mr. Brooks directly?
Yes, but somehow I have a copy of it, and Nancy Jones knows that it's a public records request.
Information request, yeah.
Okay, so it'll hopefully come back to me.
Yes.
Okay, you know, that's all I really wanted to say is, you know, I think it's... that's been left out of the picture. Like who's, you know... I'm kind of, you know, kicking a dead horse a little bit because this is what I said last week, but this is just not something we've seen. We haven't really seen support for this, you know, this whole array into this study. I don't see it, and I just want to express that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right then, the time is 12:12. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.